Hello, everyone. Welcome to March 2nd, 2022. Meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission and hopefully one of our last virtual meetings, at least for us, right? Hope everyone's doing well. First up tonight is the approval of minutes from our February 2nd, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of February 2nd, 2022 as ready for the record. Second.
All right, it's moved in seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. We have a record plot tonight, one for resubdivision of PLAT RP 9163 dash 2022, PLAT 14, The Spectrum at Watkins Mill, barking Matt after a seating canopy lot line adjustment. Greg, are you setting that up?
Um, I think you just did, so.
Okay.
Plot's been reviewed by staff and is ready for your approval.
Any, any questions from commissioners on that? All right, if not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the record plot as presented.
Second.
All right, so we moved in seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. The record plot agenda passes unanimously. Thank you for taking care of that. Next up is the recommendation to Marin City Council on a concurrent rezoning and sketch plan. And I think what I'll do, Laura, can I turn it over to you to read the whole thing again, just so we don't repeat ourselves for the setup? And you're on mute.
Never got used to doing that. Normally just to read it as it's on the agenda.
Yeah, so if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it concurrently, right? Or are we gonna do them separately?
Yes. Well, I will ask for separate motions, but I'm going to present on them together.
Okay.
So, this is a recommendation to Mayor and City Council on Application Z 8911, 2021 zoning map amendment requesting to rezone 18501 North Frederick Avenue from the C2 zone to the CD zone. And it's being reviewed concurrently with application SP 8910, 2021, concept site plan application for 18501 North Frederick Avenue.
All right.
So if the tech team could bring up page 30 of the packet. Great, thanks. So, good evening. As I mentioned, this is Planning Commission recommendation on zoning map amendment Z 8911, 2021, and concept site plan application SP 8910, 2021. These are two separate applications, but they are reviewed concurrently. A consolidated joint public hearing was held on January 18th, 2022. The Planning Commission held its record open until 5:00 PM on February 18th, 2022. And at the time of the commission's record closing, there were 21 exhibits in the record for the rezoning, Z 8911, 2021, and 29 exhibits in the record for the concept site plan SP 8910, 2021. The next slide, please. These two applications were submitted for 18501 North Frederick Avenue. It's highlighted here. It's at the corner of North Frederick Avenue and Travis Avenue. Next slide. Application Z 8911, 2021 proposes to rezone the property from C2 or general commercial to CD corridor development. And concept site plan application SP 8910, 2021 proposes to redevelop the site with two mixed-use buildings, both up to six stories tall with multifamily residential above-ground floor, commercial, and office uses. And the applicant is also applying for a height waiver. In the CD zone, properties in this northern employment district can be up to six stories or 65 feet by right, or up to eight stories and 90 feet with a waiver. Neither building will exceed the six-story height limit, but the applicant is requesting a waiver from the 65-foot limit to allow buildings to be up to 76 feet tall. Next slide. As I mentioned, the consolidated joint public hearing was held on January 18th. The council and commission were generally supportive of the plan, but there were some questions raised. So the applicant has submitted a response statement to address comments heard during the hearing, and that was included as Exhibit 19 in the rezoning record and Exhibit 27 in the concept plan record. As outlined in the staff report, the response statement addressed five main topics. It addressed master plan compliance. The applicant reiterated that these applications comply with the 2009 master plan land use element. This property was included as a map designation in that master plan, and it recommended rezoning to MXD or CD and adopting a mixed-use land use designation. And then the written narrative for the map designation talked about how there are several land use options for this property, and then it discusses a mixed-use development with a smaller residential component and a larger commercial and office component. But it did not include specific development numbers. So as noted in the response statement and in the staff report, the concept plan proposes a balance of uses that are more appropriate and sustainable for the site, given recent market changes. And it is integrating office into a mixed-use development, which is in accord with the intent of that narrative. It's timing and phasing. The applicant talked about how they are honoring current leases, but they anticipate an additional three to four years of entitlements, and then potentially starting construction a couple of years after that in 2028. And then the response also addressed pedestrian connectivity amenities, green space, and the gateway corner, and I'll go over those with some graphics on the next few slides. You can go to the next slide. The applicant pointed out proposed improvements to the sidewalk along Travis Avenue. Right now, the sidewalk is right up against the street. So they're pulling the sidewalk back, adding a planted buffer, and expanding it to 10 feet. And you can see from the rendering, the sidewalk connects up to the northern park, which is a new amenity being added to the site. It's envisioned to have plantings and walking paths. And then they also pointed out that these are building lines, so Building B is expected to have open courtyards facing Travis Avenue that will help further activate that street edge, break up the building massing, and draw pedestrians up to that northern park. And next slide. This is an additional graphic submitted with the response statement that shows street programming in response to some questions about pedestrian street activation. So you can see the parts highlighted in red portions of Street A closest to 355 will be activated by commercial storefronts. Then the orange sections around the traffic circle, those will be residential lobbies and amenity areas, which as talked about in the statement, will be activated similar to storefronts with the high percentage of glazing and multiple entry points. And then further back, closest to Travis, will be ground-floor residential units with front stoops and entrances lining the street to help activate that segment. And next slide. The applicant also provided an updated concept for the gateway corner. This is that area, the corner of 355 and Travis Avenue. They're envisioning plantings, walkways, and a public art feature to help activate and amenitize that space. Next slide. And these are staff recommendations. I won't read them word for word right now, but staff does recommend approval of both applications along with the height waiver and without the need to submit a subsequent SDP. So in the CD zone, if the concept plan is approved, the applicant can proceed to preliminary and final with Planning Commission. Or if the council chooses, they have the option to require them to come back with an SDP first. And that's all I have. The applicant's team is online tonight, available along with staff to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. So the next, the next submission, submittal from them would be a preliminary site plan, or could they go straight to final?
They would be preliminary.
It would be preliminary, okay. So given the, given the, potentially, anyway, given the amount of time that could, could elapse between now and when that only goes forward, that still gives whoever is in, in position to lead this for the city then, an opportunity to relook at some details if, you know, conditions change or it might be.
Yes, yes. The plan will be further refined on the next stage.
Right, but, but there's still time and there's still room to adjust for, I don't know, it could be traffic patterns, whatever might come up.
Yes.
And then, the, the one, the one area I wanted to make sure we acknowledge, and again, because it's so far in the future, it's hard to say how there's a play out, but the, the pedestrian connection between this and Spectrum, so crossing Frederick, Frederick Avenue or, or Travis and Spectrum, depending on which side you're on. Is, do you think the language is strong enough in there that we're, we're going to be able to expect a more enhanced crosswalk, more enhanced pedestrian safety measures, whatever it might be, to actually create that connection, not as an incidental thing, but as something that's really truly, you know, gonna, gonna try to connect both sides of 355?
On the plans, the applicant does show a new crosswalk across 355, you know, and noting that they'll need to work with HSA on that. They talk about in their statement willingness to work with all neighbors to enhance pedestrian connectivity to the site from all, both directions.
Okay. I, I don't know where it belongs, but I, I'd like us to also emphasize that, that it's not just a perfunctory crosswalk. It's something that's probably a little more aggressive and probably will require a little bit more diligence with state highway to actually get it done, no question, but, but it wouldn't be just a, just an incidental painted sidewalk with a a walkway. It might be something that's more enhanced to really, truly encourage the pedestrian connection.
Okay.
Um. Commissioner, is any, any concerns with the height, with the, the basic planning approach? I guess the waiver would be one thing we want to make sure we go on the record as either supporting or not. So any, any concerns there?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll note, I guess it hasn't come up yet, but I'll note that while they're asking for six stories in them, you know, and anything that has retail or amenities in that first floor is gonna need to break that 60-some-foot marker at six stories, because you want that first floor to have some nice headroom to it, right? So I'm all for that, but I, I would also note that it's really not a six-story building in the same, in the sense that we would think of it. It's, it's really five over one. Sorry, four over one with a garage sticking out down at the low corner of the site between Travis and 355. So it's, it's you know, if you're on the street A, if you're in the middle street, it's really a five over one, I'm sorry, four over one building. It's a five-story building, not a six-story building. So it, it's a little, you know, we're, we're giving a waiver for something that probably, you know, it isn't certainly a majority of the building. It's only particularly important, you know, and Laura, please jump in. You know, if I'm explaining it incorrectly, but that low corner at Travis and 355 is the only place that it's a six-story building, essentially.
That was, that was my impression as well. The, the waiver is, is, it, it appears to almost be a, you know, a, a technicality or, you know, the, the nuance of, you know, where building height is calculated per zoning, where in, in effect, it's, it's not going to be perceived that way. So I, I'm not concerned.
It has to do with the topography of the site. It's different from different sides of the building.
I was gonna use that same word, and I wasn't gonna get all technical like, like Matt did, but I mean, visually, I don't, I don't think it's gonna look as massive as, as it sounds. Just the way that whole area is laid out, I don't think, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Good, okay.
I would even argue for, for the next applicant, that, you know, because we have such a wide street there at 355, obviously, and the other side of Travis is commercial and park land that, you know, if, if it were what we were intending, which is that north end, the business district, something a little bit taller, I'm, I'm not sure would be inappropriate, particularly since the neighboring gardens are up a hill.
Yeah.
So, so I, I think, you know, the, the, we could actually throw an extra story on this thing and maybe be okay. But, you know, we, we need a full explanation. We need a good design to come behind it, which, you know, so it's not this application, but what I'm saying is on the north end of the business district, I don't want to discourage folks coming in with a little more density where it's appropriate. But, but this one doesn't even ask for that extra story, really.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay, and then there, there was a little bit of discussion, and it wasn't much, but the, the concept of going CD versus MXD, which was in large part due to the limitations of MXD and, and what the minimum parcel size were. But i- if, there'd be no reason for us not to consider a CD in this, at this point, because I think if you were getting down to real detail and, and trying to be technical about it, there is a little bit of a departure from what was originally called for the master plan for a higher percentage or a higher emphasis on retail and not residential, but I think in terms of the broader scheme, it's, it's, it falls within that framework. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add from a planning standpoint, I kind of like the idea that there's just a tiny bit of neighborhood goods and services over on this side, you know, small, you know, maybe some small F and B or something, food and beverage, or, or something else that's really just serving the immediate neighborhood. Or something specialty like an ice cream shop, let's say, something like that. And then, but, but really, we're concentrating what is, what, you know, what is today less square footage at a higher quality of retail on the other side of the street. So I don't, I don't know that there's the same kind of giant big box or junior anchor, you know, market that there was when we were doing that master plan work. So I, I would, I'd be terrified at this at any more retail. I'm almost a little scared of that retail that goes up Street A, you know, and, and starts to, you know, bury itself back into the, into the, into that street, because it's, it's certainly not gonna get any drive-by traffic. It, 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 it needs to be something very neighborhood-oriented in order to survive back there. So any, any other square foot of retail back there really worries me. It's something that's just gonna come back to us and.
But you brought up another point earlier that I, I wonder if, if now's the time to at least get it in the record, and that is that whatever happens on the first floor for retail, that it actually is built right. It's not, we know, we've seen some projects come through with first-floor retail residential above where, where they didn't do the base size, height, height or width or depth right, and so it really wasn't leaseable by, by any kind of current standards.
It's a great point. And, and we have, we have painted ourselves into that corner, like you said, John, or allowed them to paint us into the corner, I guess. And, and I guess we don't have details yet, but it's certainly something to keep on our, on our list and for Laura and Greg and, and team to sort of pursue heavily. In the graphic of their, of their street section, you know, they, they showed that fatter first floor at retail. So, so there's a hint there that they understand, you know, the challenges of retail on the first floor. We, we just wanna make sure that they do it right. Because if they're not doing everything right that they can, heights, depths, and, you know, approaches, visibility, all that kind of fun stuff, it, it'll just die and it'll end up either being vacant for a decade is what John's alluding to. And, and or having to come back and put a use that's not really appropriate for the shell that was already built, you know, so it's, that's great point and a, and a mark to, you know, Greg and Laura to, you know, keep a very close eye on, so.
I mean, do we wanna, should that be part of the recommendation is that the height? The height is partly, partly a technicality. We acknowledge that. It may, may not really be that necessary, but we're, we're in favor of the waiver. But also that, that height accommodates a legitimate retail first floor, not just, not just what happens to happen because the, the calculation from the corner of Travis and Frederick make it a taller building.
Yeah, but maybe, yes, and best practices for retail shell dimensions, something like that.
Okay. Good. Can we capture that, Laura, somehow in the recommendation?
Um, I don't know if that would, I don't know if that would be a condition. Greg, man, can you help with that one?
I think you, again, I'm here. I apologize. My camera decided it wanted to die at the last meeting, so I apologize for that. I think we can capture it as part of the memo to, from the Planning Commission to the council as, as it relates to the waiver request to the height.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we've got CD covered. I think any other, any other comments or concerns on the CD request, zoning request? No?
I'll, I'll just add, John, I'm sorry, but I'll just add that I, I like the CD rather than the, the mixed use on this property, because I think it's actually encouraging to show some of the other CD properties, and there's not a ton of them, but there's a few of them, that they can do some, some, you know, good dense development, if, you know, if they bring it in and they think about it on a CD, they don't have to combine it with 18 other properties and do a big MXD kind of system. They can, they can really develop their property very well under that existing zone, so.
Good point. All right, and then, and finally, it would be the, the concept plan that goes along with this as well. So any, any issues with the plan itself? No? Okay. It seems to make sense of an interesting triangle sloping, you know, kind of, kind of what would have been, it must have been difficult for them the first time to get this all to work.
Yeah, loading works. It's, it really only has one, you know, it's a triangle, so it only has one dead side. You know, where you, you wanna, where you wanna load from, but they managed to slip into loading around the corners, and we're gonna have to keep track of all those details when it actually comes in for site plan, but I, I think they have a good head start.
Yeah, good. All right, if any other questions or concerns or comments? All right, if there are not, should we do three separate motions, Laura?
I think that would be the cleanest way to do it.
Okay, so let's go with the, let's start with the rezoning, the zoning map amendment. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommend, based on the findings presented here in the evidence and the record, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z 8911-2021 to the Marin City Council.
No conditions?
No conditions.
My second.
All right, moved in seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Then the next up is the recommendation to the council for the height waiver. Is there a motion, please?
Is the height waiver a separate motion? I'm looking at the, the staff recommendation has the SP and the height waiver as one.
I'm, I will defer to Deputy City Attorney on if we should do two separate motions for that, or if it can be combined with the concept site plan.
Because the waiver does require separate findings, I understand that may be combined in the recommendation, but let's, if we can have the record lay out the three separate motions, that would be best.
Good.
All right, in, in that case, Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the findings presented this evening, as well as the evidence and the record, recommend approval of SP 8910-2021 to the Marin City Council without, without the need to submit a subsequent schematic development plan.
Well, that's the plan. We need the height waiver first as a separate motion.
It's on the last slide from my presentation.
Yeah.
Do you want me to make that motion?
Yeah.
Somebody else who has that slide.
I got it up.
Danny.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I recommend that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and the record and the findings presented in the staff analysis, recommend approval of Section 24-1G, 160G5 height waiver to the Mayor and City Council.
Second. If anybody is doing wordsmithing, let's make one small correction that you're not recommending, you're actually making the motion that we recommend, right? Okay.
That's wordsmith. We, we recommend, yes.
No, we, we, you're, you're making the motion for us to recommend approval.
I, I recommend approval of everything I said before.
All right.
Is that good?
You, you're making a motion, Danny.
Okay.
For approval for a recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Second.
My second.
All right. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye, aye, aye.
And, and I, and I vote aye. That passes unanimously. And finally, the third part of this, what, what has to be said, you know, and I'll break right here and say, if, if, if the Kimco team is listening in tonight, nice work on, on putting together a, a plan that takes on a very interesting and very challenging site, and thank you for bringing this plan forward. So best of luck in moving this forward when, when, when it gets to the next, next phase. So with that, the final, the final piece is to then recommend approval to the Marin Council for the site, for the concept site plan.
Go, Phil. It's all yours.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and the record and findings presented in the staff analysis, recommend approval of concept plan SP 8910-2021 to the Marin Council with no conditions and without the need to submit a subsequent schematic development plan.
Second.
All right, I'm glad you found that slide, Phil. So we moved in seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And, and I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. So thank you very much, Laura. Thank you for pulling this together and on the next phase.
Thanks.
And again, Kimco team, if you're listening, thank you for the work you've done on this plan and good luck. All right, next up is STP-9073-2021, construction of a new infill pad site totaling 21,700 square feet at the Kettleman Square Shopping Center, Zone MXD mixed-use development. And this is another recommendation to the Marin City Council and presenting staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. Tech team, can I please have packet page number three or four, please? Good evening. This is a Plan Commission recommendation to the Mayor City Council for schematic development plan application, STP-9073-2021. Next page, please. And as shown on the screen, the subject property is located within the Kettleman Square Shopping Center and is Zone MXD. Next page, please. So the applicant submitted an STP application requesting approval for three infill pad sites within the existing shopping center parking lot adjacent to the at-home store and other commercial tenants along the private drive aisle, Main Street. The new infill buildings will total a maximum of 21,700 square feet and not exceed two stories in height. Tenants for all three sites have not been determined. The plan currently does not show final building footprints, but the maximum built two lines. The infill sites will adopt the guidelines that was approved for Site C, D, and E within the Lowe's parking lot for schematic development plan 7712-2017. Along the private drive aisle, the plan proposes a 16-foot sidewalk, which will include tree planting, streetlights similar to the existing streetscape improvements completed along Kettleman Square Place. Next page, please. A joint public hearing for the application was held on January 18th, 2022, and during the course of the hearing, there were com- comments raised about the parking waiver requests, master plan compliance, sketch plan compliance, the drive-through access on Site H, and the overall pedestrian connectivity within the shopping center. Staff received one outside correspondence from the public, which is Exhibit 45 in the record. The Planet Commission's record closed on February 24th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. And there are currently 53 exhibits in the record. The applicant has submitted a response letter and exhibits, which are Exhibits 46 to 53. And next I will go through the applicant's responses to the questions raised during the hearing. As part of the STP application, the applicant is requesting a 221 parking space waiver. During the hearing, there were comments raised about the parking waiver and the parking demand within the shopping center. The applicant's traffic engineer appeared a memo that evaluates the parking surplus within lots one through four during weekday weekend in June of 2021. Analysis also included future conditions during the peak parking season in December. The anticipated increase in development, parking spaces occupied for the Lowe's seasonal mulch and plant storage on lots three and four, and spaces that were temporarily blocked on Lot Two with construction materials. The parking assessment is based on fill observations, forecasted parking offices, and abandoned within the shopping center. The analysis was prepared assuming that the various infill buildings will be occupied by a mix of retail, restaurant, and service tenants that are consistent with the range of uses in the shopping center and a developer's strategy for the shopping center. The memo includes six exhibits that summarizes the parking space occupancy, and I will go through each one of those next. So next page, please. So this first figure shows the existing parking weekday conditions in June of 2021 at the peak hour of 1:00 PM. This figure noted that spaces were blocked by construction materials on Lot Two and the Lowe's mulch and plant storage on lots three and four. And it notes that there was a surplus of 746 parking spaces. Next page, please. So Figure Two shows the existing parking weekend condition in June of 2021 at the peak hour of 1:00 PM. Similar to Figure One, these spaces were blocked by construction materials on Lot Two and the Lowe's mulch storage on three and four. And applicant or the memo notes that there's 677, 677 spaces surplus parking spaces. Next page, please. So Figure Three shows the future parking weekday conditions in December at the peak hour with the full built-out for all the infill sites for the shopping center. So the spaces at this time are now occupied by the mulch, the Lowe's mulch and plant storage. And it notes that there will be a surplus of 282. And it notes that there will be a surplus of two hundred and eighty-two, um, parking spaces. Next page, please. Uh, figure four shows the, uh, future parking, uh, weekend conditions in December at the peak hour. Uh, similar, uh, to the last figure with full buildout and, um, no spaces are, are taken by the Lowe's mulch and plant storage, and there'll be a, uh, one hundred and seventy-four space parking surplus. Next page, please. Uh, figure five shows, uh, future weekday conditions in June, uh, at peak hour with the full buildout. Uh, the, uh, this exhibit took account to the spaces were occupied by Lowe's, um, mulch and plant storage. And note that there'll be a four hundred and forty-nine space, uh, parking surplus. Uh, next page, please. And lastly, figure six shows the future weekend condition in June at the peak hour with full buildout, and similar to the last, uh, figure, it took account the space, um, that will be occupied by Lowe's mulch and plant storage in lots three and four, and overall, there'll be a three hundred and seventy-two parking space surplus. So conclusion, the applicant's opinion that the request for a two hundred and twenty-one parking space waiver will enhance the Kettle and Square Shopping Center and the greater community, um, by replacing excess surface parking spaces with pedestrian streetscape improvements that promote safe and efficient multimodal circulation options through the property. The plan will improve the area with additional landscape, public space, and stormwater management facilities. The street activity commercial, um, uses will um, enhance the city's commercials tax base, and there'll be a surplus of spaces to support the new infill sites and not impact the existing tenants. Um, staff would note that, um, once a final site plan, um, has been approved, or once a final site plan and the parking waiver has been granted for these infill sites, uh, the Lowe's mulch, uh, will be reviewed by the planning commission, uh, before staff have reviewed them as a staff approval, but once a parking waiver has been granted, um, that review be, uh, going to the planning commission in the future just to ensure that, um, that parking still be accommodated for the future, uh, infill sites. Uh, so during the public hearing, uh, there were questions about when the developer envisioned, um, starting to establish the recommendations of the Kettle and Boulevard, um, Commercial District Special Area Master Plan. So the shopping center is part of the two, um, thousand eight Kettle and's master plan and, um, which established long-term vision for the overall Kettle and's, uh, community district, uh, commercial district. In the applicant's letter, it was noted that a similar question was asked during the SDP review for infill sites C, D, and E. A site plan, uh, is not vested under a certain master plan until it receives SDP and final site plan approval. So this current SDP application is in connection with the nineteen ninety, um, seven master plan and has vested rights under the previously approved final site plan application, uh, K dash nine seventy-seven. While the two thousand eight Kettle and's, uh, commercial master plan established a long-term vision for the Kettle and's document acknowledges the need for fulfilling short-term needs to support the long-term vision. They proposed infill sites will make the Kettle and's, uh, Square Shopping Center more market responsive and thereby enhance the developer's ability to deliver the long-term vision of the two thousand eight master plan. The SDP, uh, will not preclude the developer to establish that master plan in the future. Uh, next page, please. So a similar question, uh, was raised, um, about the sketch plan, um, and, uh, whether, uh, when does the developer envision to implement the approved sketch plan, S K dash seven five oh three dash twenty seventeen? The sketch plan represents the first phase of the long-term redevelopment strategy to implement that two thousand eight Kettle and's master plan. As noted in the applicant's response letter, um, the sketch plan was filed, um, to respond to the conditions created by, um, Kmart vacating its location and Saul's participation in the long-term planning efforts, uh, to the quarter city's transitway. However, after receiving the, uh, sketch plan approval, the, uh, Kmart space was leased to, um, the current tenant, um, at home, and the funding and planning for discussions for that quarter transitway, uh, was stalled. The proposed SDP application is separate from the previously approved sketch plan and must be in performance with sketch plan, uh, Z dash two hundred and sixty-two A. As shown on the screen, the applicant has provided an exhibit that overlays the SDP with the previously approved sketch plan. Their proposed infill building sites are integrated into the street network envisioned in the sketch plan. And the applicant has acknowledged that the drive-through building on site H will eventually be need to be eliminated to implement the mixed-use development outline in the approved sketch plan. The, uh, similar to the questions about the master plan, this SDP, um, will not preclude the applicant's long-term goal of implementing the sketch plan in the future. The applicant also notes that the high-rise multifamily construction that was envisioned in the two, um, thousand eight master plan and sketch plan required enhanced construction techniques and materials which come at a great cost. When the market will support rents for high-rise multifamily construction, the applicant will pursue the implementation of residential uses shown on the sketch plan. And the applicant also notes, um, multiple schematic development plan approvals, uh, were approved, uh, for multifamily projects in the Kettle and's. Um, but neither of those projects have proceeded to final site plan application since that approval. Next page, please. Uh, so there were comments raised about the drive-through at site H such as access and vehicle stacking concerns. The applicant notes that the drive-through was conceptionally designed with no specific tenant identified. Once a tenant is identified, the ultimate layout of the drive-through will be determined and potential adjustments, uh, will be made either to the building or the site. Saul has seen significant market demand for drive-throughs due to resulting constraints around in-store dining by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Saul believes that the drive-through retail stores are an important component in serving the community and providing a varied and competitive merchandising mix for the shopping center. The site plan was revised to swap, um, for existing parking spaces and the existing, um, oh, sorry. So the site plan was revised to swap the four existing parking spaces with the existing, um, green space island. Jason, to the drive-through entrance to further mitigate any con- um, conflicts for parked vehicles at that entrance. Uh, so the city's best practices memo primarily focused on a drive-through with one lane. Uh, the applicant used the largest recommended stack length for food beverage base establishments, uh, to determine whether the proposed drive-through meets the intent of the best practices. The applicant notes that the double lane, uh, drive-through are more efficient use of land and provides sufficient stacking capacity and meets the intent of the best practices of the, um, city's memo. For food, food beverage base establishments, the recommended stack length should be between two hundred and two hundred and sixty feet to allow for car, ten can, ten cars length stacking. The, the proposed drive-through will be approximately two hundred and forty feet and can accommodate twelve cars within the stacking lanes. The lanes will, um, allow eight cars to stack to the order boards and four cars to stack to the pack, uh, pickup window. The drive-through lanes provide stacking that is within the recommended range, uh, for food establishments. And the lanes are located on a service site of the building such that pedestrian walkways are located along the main private drive aisle. The drive-through entrance is located to the interior of the center with sufficient separation from all access points on the adjacent public streets. Uh, drive-through lanes are separate from adjacent parking areas with curbs and pedestrian access to the building, um, to minimize conflicts with the drive-through lane. Um, so the applicant has submitted an exhibit that demonstrates, um, existing, um, stacked, um, sorry, the applicant has also submitted an exhibit that demonstrates existing double-stack drive-through, um, lanes and other areas to support that design. Next page, please. Uh, so lastly, there were comments raised about the overall pedestrian connectivity within the shopping center and the ability for customers to park their vehicles in one section of the shopping center and cross-shop, um, at different stores safely. As shown on the screen, the applicant has provided an overall pedestrian connectivity exhibit. The existing sidewalks are highlighted in orange and the new proposed sidewalks are highlighted in purple. The applicant notes the exhibit demonstrates that there's adequate pedestrian connection with, uh, no matter where the patrons park within the shopping center. The street, uh, streetscape improvements will allow for safe and efficient pedestrian circulation from the SDP area to other portions within the, uh, shopping center and the overall Kettle and's community. Uh, so in conclusion, um, Seth has reviewed the applicant's letter exhibits and his opinion that they have adequately addressed some of the comments raised by the Mary City Council and planning commission. And while, um, staff is supportive of the SDP and the proposed drive-through, um, staff feels like the applicant has not addressed the concerns raised about the drive-through, and while, um, Seth understands that the tenant has not been identified and the drive-through meets the city's best practices, there'll be neat, um, changes made to either the site and the building to ensure that the proposed drive-through does not cause stacking and access conflicts. Uh, so in conclusion, uh, staff is supportive of the proposed SDP application and the parking waiver, and that concludes my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have this evening.
So Jasmine, go back to where, where you were just finishing up and talking about the drive-through. The staff is not supportive of the current configuration as shown, but understands that there's, there's work to be done later, or the applicant doesn't, how do, how do we position that?
So staff is supportive of a drive-through there, but the current design, there's still some concerns. The applicant hasn't really provide information on how this current design as shown won't cause any stacking or access issues on the private drive aisle.
So, so I agree with that, but what, what does that do to our recommendation? Like, how do we, how do we position that within the? Right now, you're saying the staff recommends that we recommend approval, but there's really nothing acknowledging that that's a shortcoming of the plan in the conditions or whatever.
So we understand, oh, that's all right, go ahead.
Uh, if you don't mind, I was gonna jump in real quick. Um, yeah, stat, like Jasmine said, staff does support the drive-through. Um, obviously, without the note, who, knowing who the tenant is going to be ultimately, though, it is difficult to really design the drive-through depending on what the stacking needs and the requirements are. Again, just because a lot of drive-throughs we've seen recently may be restaurants. There are new models that we've seen that may not have, you know, a typical, um, menu board, right, where it's just drive up and pick up, um, which may change the design of that actual driver. So it's staff's opinion that the final design of that should be, should be further refined at the final site plan stage when we actually know who the tenant will be.
Okay, um, I, I don't want to dominate the discussion just yet on that, because I want to let the other commissioner speak, but I want to get back to that because I think, I think there is something we could, we could say or do in this recommendation to, to put a framework around that. Um, so anyway, let me, let me back off for a second, and commissioners, any other questions for Jasmine about the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, Lloyd. You're on mute, Lloyd. Lloyd, you're on mute.
Without getting too specific. Talking to myself, that sounds great. Uh, without getting too specific about the drive-through. Are we wedded or is the developer wedded to that particular site? Uh, that particular box site at the end, I think it's number four? Or can that be moved? Can the, can we move or can the developer move that site for the drive-through to, let's say, the one closest to, um, I, I don't, I don't have the, the map here right now, but.
If you look at page three fifteen.
Yeah, that's great. Um, number, where number six is, for instance.
And next, next page, please. That shows kind of a close-up, um.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah, the, um, well, the proposed site there is, is P. Okay, we'll call it site H.
Bring up packet page.
Talking about moving the site, moving the drive-in to two doors down.
Wait, hang on a second, Lloyd. Hang on a second. Greg just gave me a cue for putting another page. Maybe this will help.
There you go. I think that will help.
Yeah, side, uh, side F. In other words, the drive-through instead of site H could be side F. Is that a possibility?
Is that, repeat, repeat that again, you wanna?
Instead of having this drive-through at site F, uh, site H, we move it to site F, which would make it a, a less onerous, I think, as far as stacking and, and, uh, entrances off the highway of a great Seneca Highway. Is that a possibility? Why are we wedded, are we wedded to the drive-through being specifically as site H? Can we move it?
Um, that would require the applicant to kind of do more further, um, engineered designs to see whether site F could work for a drive-through.
The applicant hasn't brought to our attention that they wish to move the drive-through to site F. Um, it's something we would have to explore with them further. Um, typically, a drive-through is something we do handle at a final site plan stage, not at a preliminary site plan stage. Um, the applicant's team just wants to, would have wanted everyone to understand that, uh, site H may have a drive-through. Um, again, with our discussions with them, there's not even necessarily that a site H may even have a drive-through, again, depending on who the tenant ultimately is.
Okay.
Um, so again, yes, I mean, we could explore that further with the applicant as part of the final site plan. Um, depending, you know, we would want it to still see how it fits within the existing parking lot and maintain some of the existing drive aisles, obviously.
Well, let me frame the question, let me frame the question differently. Lloyd, maybe this will help, um, or maybe not. Um, if the applicant were, so if we, if we recommend approval of this SDP, it shows a drive-through on site H. If the applicant were to come back at final site plan or even a preliminary site plan and propose to move the, uh, drive-through to site G or site F, would that require, um, uh, an amendment to the SDP, or could they do that? Would they have the latitude to do that?
I would think they would have the latitude to do that at a final site plan review, but again, without seeing further of how that would be implemented.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not getting to the solution. I'm just asking in terms of process. This, this would sort of vest that there's three, three sites and one of them could have a drive-through, but it could be any one of the three. Is that how you understand it?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that's what, I think we're saying the same thing. Yeah, I, I believe they could move the drive-through as part of the final site plan review. But again, it, it would be hard for me necessarily say it wouldn't require an SDP amendment without seeing how they would implement that within the project.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna, if it encroached on the extent of the site that's not included in the SDP, maybe it would be, you know, a, uh, you know, an amendment. Okay, anyway, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, Lloyd.
Uh, no, my other question would be then, the square footage that's dedicated to site F right now versus site H is, is different. Uh, therefore, would the square footage also impact the, uh, SDP? Those that we switched, or if we wanted to, or if they want to reduce the site, the size of the site?
Potentially, potentially reduce, you know, adding a drive-through to site F could reduce the size of site F. Um, again, I, I, I would note also if they came back and tried to swip, flip that density from F to H, that would trigger an amendment to the SDP.
That would trigger it, okay. Okay, I just want a clarification. Thank you on that, Greg.
Any other, um, questions or comments on the, um, application?
Comment, I guess. Um, I love, uh, Lloyd's thought process got me thinking just that, you know, the diagram of what, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sort of looking at, um, is really that, uh, you know, F and G are, are, um, have a lot more surface area, paved area that surrounds a pedestrian paved area. In my mind, it's a little more at that corner and is more engaging with the other corner buildings. Um, so, you know, diagrammatically to me, it feels more pedestrian oriented, and so I, I kind of, uh, if, if we're gonna have a drive-through, uh, diagrammatically, it seems like it ought to be down on the side of Lowe's rather than up at the, uh, pedestrian corner. Uh, it's like, I kind of like the big, the larger multi-tenant retail buildings that have the large plaza in between and out front. Um, it creates, creates a nice environment at that, at that, you know, what's not a corner now, but hopefully someday will be like a corner, you know? And, um, uh, so I, I think if we have to have a drive-through, which I, I don't, you know, I don't know that we have to have, but if we have a drive-through, it, it probably isn't the right place diagrammatically. But, uh, but I certainly agree that coming in off the highway and, you know, making a right into, you know, um, in the way this is laid out, we kind of know who the retailer is, right? Um, they're, they're hinting at it pretty strongly. So I think there's, there is a real risk there, and there is certainly a way to work it out, the, for the applicant to work it out, um, that, that perhaps they have to go up and make the U-turn, or perhaps they have to make, you know, the right turn up at the corner of site H and, and come all the way up and around in order, in order to queue into that line, and we just block it off from that, you know, from that process. Um, so, so they can queue back up. They could, you could even make another right turn into the queue lane from the, from the lane above. It would be really convoluted. It would take up a lot more of the site. But I think the applicant is also telling us that, um, you know, it's a fairly small investment, right, for this drive-through? And, and I'm assuming it's not going to be an eighty-year lease, right? So it, you know, if, if they come back for a new development, it's really going to be a block development, right? It's gonna be something substantial, something dense and something, uh, mixed. And so I think, um, uh, you know, that this fairly small, relatively simple building goes away at that point in the distant future. Uh, so I, I don't know that taking up a little more of the parking lot would be necessarily a big problem unless they had some kind of lease overlay with the large box retailer up north. Um, you know, plant, plant up. But, um, so anyway, I, I guess what I'm getting to, there, there's gotta be a way to solve the stacking issue where you're not just, everybody's not just turning that right right off of the highway and right into the, into the queue. Um, and, and then trying to make a left across the drive aisle into the queue. It's, it's, it's very convoluted. Uh, and I'm not necessarily against drive-throughs. I'm as lazy as the next guy, but, um, um, I think, um, there, there's gotta be a way to solve this. It just may be not quite as neat as we're showing here. So that, that's, maybe this is my addition to the sketch plan. So that, that's maybe this is my addition to the sketch plan idea. So if, if this sketch plan reaches further into the, into the parking lot. Uh, page north. Jasmine, does that, does that end up, if their solution involves a little more site area, does that end up, uh, coming back for a sketch plan? Amendment, sorry. So if they, if they need more site area than what they've kind of identified within that parking lot in order to solve this problem. Does, does that end up coming back, um, for a sketch plan amendment or, or is that, is that really?
SDP amendment.
No, I think we could handle that as part of a final site plan. I, I believe what you're saying is if they did a right hand turn, let's say, within that existing drive aisle. And had all the entrance coming from the Lowe's or not the Lowe's, the, uh, at home side, let's say of the parking lot. Um, I would think we could handle that as part of the final site plan.
Wha- what if it changes the parking numbers? Can, can we, would, would, would additional parking waivers be a, a final site plan item? Or would that trigger a new SDP?
That would be done by the planning commission. Um, the final parking waiver is always granted by the planning commission. It's the authority under the zoning ordinance. So the commission does have that ability.
I guess.
We're, we're being lawyers tonight.
I know. Um, my, my one question and I'm asking this to hopefully be done talking about the drive through, but. We're approving that there is a drive through.
That's correct.
We're not approving that it's a two lane drive through with eight member, eight car queuing or that it's left hand turn or right hand turn. We're just approving that there is a drive through is, is a permitted use.
Yep, that's correct. Once a tenant is determined and final designed, then. Is it possible that, that, that design that you see currently will change?
All right. And I will add to that, we don't have drive throughs in the zoning ordinance as a use. So it, it's not a discussion necessarily if it's a permitted use or not.
I, there is no danger that we get into a situation where somebody comes back with a final site plan and says you have to approve this drive through the way it is. Cause that's what it was shown on the SDP.
No.
All right, cool. Then we can be done talking about drive throughs.
And if the commission felt comfortable, I mean, I think we could add a condition or add some discussion, obviously, within the, the memo to the council. Reiterating that as well, that we, that the commission understands that further refinement of the drive through would need to occur as part of the final site.
Yeah, I, listen Greg, I wouldn't use that language refinement. I would say in no uncertain terms that a drive through is, is, is okay as part of this, this. SDP as a, as a component of the SDP, but as drawn it, it is not approved, period. It'll, it'll have to be redesigned and there's, there's, there's too many, there's too many reasons for that for us to, to quantify all that tonight. Because it, you're right, it depends on the building type, it depends on the client, on the, on the tenant, but the bottom line is what's shown doesn't work. It's, it's not a proxy for an approvable plan right now. It's, it's simply the, the statement that there would be a drive through here and that's all we can, can improve. And I, I'd go one step farther in our recommendations, say it must come back and, and as a redesign, as, as, and be reconfigured.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's very strong because as it is, as it stands, I'm not, I was not willing to approve this.
Yeah.
I'll just be very clear. I was not willing to approve it.
And I'm not, I, I, Phil, I want to add one more sort of editorial comment. It, it's interesting, over the years that we've had to deal with people knocking on the door about drive throughs. It's a very interesting evolution, I think that we've, we've stumbled into where. We had an original premise that. We were first and foremost a walkable community in this, this commercial area and we didn't want to do anything to subvert that. We wanted it to be a walkable community. And we weren't going to put in any emphasis on cars. And secondarily to that, there was this whole issue of when you encourage driving, you're, you're impacting the environment. And it, it again, it works against you in terms of the ultimate goal of having a clean, walkable community. A couple of things that have emerged, I think, over time and one is that. The, the walkability can be preserved. In fact, it could even be enhanced and still do a drive through. It's not an either or, it's an and. And, and we kind of proved that with the work that the staff did on the Starbucks, but it's not easy. It's not going to be a slam dunk every time. It's going to take some work and this hasn't done it yet. The second piece to that on the environmental side is, gosh, look what's happened to cars. They're getting smaller, they're getting more fuel efficient, they're getting cleaner. Not all of them, people are still driving large trucks and they're, they're doing all that stuff, but the bottom line is. Given the patterns that emerged during the pandemic and the fact that there's, there's much more, um, environmentally friendly vehicles. And they're only going to get more so right over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Um, I, I think there's less, less reason to expect that cars can't coexist in this walkable environment as they begin to approach. Much less impact on the, on the walkable community, both from a environmental and from a, from at least what we can preserve on the, on the planning and the, and the circulation side. So I'm, I'm, I'm finding myself at this point, ten years in after this argument has started. Less and less, finding less and less reason to say no to a drive through, but more and more reason to be very, very. Careful to emphasize this is not the drive throughs that you see up and down, you know, pick a commercial strip anywhere in the world. This is an entirely different and unique way of approaching this problem and it has to be for us to preserve those other hyper priorities. And what they've drawn is fairly conventional, frankly. It's not, it really hasn't embraced all of the better parts of what, what we can do to make this work in a walkable community.
Well said. It's not, it's not an op ed. That's, uh, that's on the, uh, the paper approves that, right? The entire editorial board. But I think that's, uh, as, as a great synopsis, John, and I would only add, uh, the minor, comparatively minor idea that. You know, mar- market forces will adjust some of this. If it's in a really long line, it's very difficult. People are honking at you. There's some. There's some physical, you know, uh, uncomfortableness with using the drive through because it's not well designed. Uh, for the throughput, uh, they'll start to lose those customers. You know, there's some market forces there. My, my concern as a commissioner is that when you're, when you're going through that pain, that market pain and teaching that, that, you know, seller. A lesson that he did a poor, poor design and we approved the poor design. Um, that, that's the period. I, I don't want to have that mistake. So if we can have that traffic routed around the back. And then you'll, it'll be awful for a year and then people will figure it out and stop, stop using the business that way. Uh, that's that inter- intervening year that I would love it to be, you know, pressed back up against the parking lot. Rather than out on the drive aisle where pedestrians are in the, in the incoming traffic. Um, so, uh, and then I, and then I think it will adjust. I don't think it'll always be a big problem. Um, you know, mar- market forces do tend to work, they just slow and they're painful.
So by the way, we'll take some of that pressure off of the curb where people are trying to do pickup and curbside delivery now. I mean, that's actually a good thing.
Yeah, it's great, yep.
All right.
I had one more question regarding pedestrian access. There was a diagram, I want to say it was page three sixteen, the, the last page of the presentation. That showed this, this site wide diagram for pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian circulation. When I look at this, what I see is, is one more element of my ongoing concern with this, with this entire thing. Which is a little bit of a disconnect from reality as to how the site functions. You know, it's really easy to draw orange lines on a plan and say, look, there's a pedestrian connection, you know. Doesn't mean it actually works that way or any human being is going to walk that way. Um.
So. It is, it is, uh, I, I didn't notice it Phil, but now that you pull it up, it is kind of embarrassing to see some of those orange lines just go off into nothing. And it, it belies a lack of science.
And, and, and reality, I mean.
Yeah, reality, right.
Yeah, and, and, and where I was going with this was my, my, my second biggest concern and I'm glad that the parking. For Lowe's is going to come back to us and hopefully be something that is actually enforced and monitored. Because that orange pedestrian line in front of Lowe's is only for the people who want to get run over by everybody picking up their. Plants and who want to, you know, pole vault over lawn mowers to make that pedestrian connection. So total, total.
Snow blowers.
To- total, total fantasy. Um, I, I just couldn't let that go without pointing it out.
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you, thank you, Phil. I, I was, I was waiting my turn, but you, you kind of, you, 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 you laid it out there really nicely for me. Thank you so much, I mean, come on.
May, maybe even more, more egregious is they missed some of the neighboring retail for, for frontage for orange lines. There's, there's some retail there that should have pedestrians go walking down it to have, have dinner on the backside and front side of some of the other restaurants.
Very good. Um, and on the plus side, I mean, I, I guess it has to be said, just, just so we're not, not getting too off, off track on terms of the, what the applicants proposing. Um, there, there has always been this notion that whatever becomes of Kellin Square, it was going to move away from. What unfortunately was very, very early on in, in the, in some of the troubles that the development had from a very suburban style strip center. To something that did begin to approach more of the, um, walkable urban, um, vision of the larger neighborhood. And these are incremental steps in that direction. I mean, the good news is that's, it's, it's in that direction, if not large, many steps, at least it's a couple of baby steps and, and, and we'll take it, right? I mean, you know, markets being what they are and resources being whatever there's available. Um, I mean, I think it can be said that at least this is stepping in that direction where now the density is building up in a way that's not. It's, it's going to be completely accessible to, to pedestrians and, and we'll work through the, the pain of trying to figure out how to. Adapt the parking and, and some of the, some of those challenges, but that's design, right? I mean, that's what you do when you, you go through the design process, so. Um, so Jasmine, I think where we want to end up is we want to end up with a little stronger language on our recommendation about. The difference between approving the concept of a drive through being allowable in this development. And the fact that the plan is shown is not the solution. And I, I don't, I don't know the. The way to get to that in a quick, quick cut, but I, I, I think that's what we're saying we want to have as part of the, up high on the recommendation.
The part of the, the memo.
Okay.
I mean, that, that was a whole lot of talk to say that we agree with Jasmine's analysis, but.
Great point. Okay, um, any other points we need to add to the memo or any concerns with the proposal? So we've got essentially, um, two pieces here, um. Well, well, we're doing it in one motion, but we'll end up with the approval of the plan as, as a SDP recommendation. And a recommendation that we move forward with, with a parking waiver. Now, there's a photometric requirement and a PUE concordation, but that's all technical, that's fine. Anything else that anybody's concerned about with moving this forward? No, okay. Um, and we can start taking bets on who the tenant is for the drive through after the meeting's over, I guess. All right, good. Um, so with that, um, we have a recommendate, recommend, recommended motion from staff. For a recommendation, so is there a motion please? Anybody?
Like Lloyd's boycotting or something.
I am too.
abstaining.
Missed my extension.
Mr. Chair, I, I moved that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted for the records and the fi- findings and the final staff analysis. I move that we recommend approval of SDP nine zero seven three twenty twenty one to the Marin City Council.
It's the two.
With the two conditions, uh, when the record by staff?
Well, it's gonna be in the memo.
Memo, right.
Okay. There are no conditions required by staff, so I'm.
I'm looking in the wrong place. I apologize. Correct.
I'll second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
Commissioner Winborn.
Very tepid, I.
Okay, um, and I'll vote I as well. It just has to be I and I or no, right? Uh, so that passes and I say, thank you all very much. If, um, if the B of Salt team is listening in. Um, I hope you, um, appreciate what we're talking about in terms of, uh, the design process on the site, but good luck and it's, it's great to see some, uh. Some new economic development coming to, to this, the center. So thank you for bringing this in. All right, um. Next up is our site plan agenda and we have one tonight and I'll remind folks listening and the, the record is open on this site plan. So if there's any, any discussion to be had from the public, you'll be given an opportunity for this. Um, site plan is for SP dash nine one six six dash twenty twenty two, new driveway and parking lot in the rear. Yard at Nine Brooks Avenue in the RV residential buffer zone. This is the final site plan and presenting from staff is Chris Berger. Hi Chris, how are you?
Hello, good evening. Uh, tech team packet page four, four, six, please. Nine Brooks Avenue was zoned RV residential buffer. It serves as an office building. The applicant seeks a waiver for the number of parking spaces in the proposed lot to be installed in the rear yard. Based on the size of the expanded office building, nine spaces are required. The applicant seeks to build four new spaces in addition to the two existing spaces in the garage. So they will need a waiver for three spaces. Tech team, can you show the photo of the drone aerial? And while they do that, in accordance with section twenty four dash one seven two A B three K. Staff may grant parking waivers of up to ten percent of the required parking. But parking waivers that are over ten percent of the required parking may only be granted by planning commission. The planning commission may consider the criteria under section twenty four dash two, two, two A, A in its approval of the parking waiver. So we're looking at a side view of the house and the parking lot will be built. Left side of your screen where those stairs are currently, that, that they will be removed, but the parking will be just beyond that. And tech team, if you want to show the other aerial photo that we have. And here's another view. This is where the drone is over the Verizon property, which is at the rear of, uh, Nine Brooks Avenue. So some background on that property, the planning commission approved S seven eight four R in nineteen eighty five. To convert the use from residential to office and also construct nine parking spaces, but the parking spaces were never constructed. Um, the property contributes to the Brooks, Brooks Russell and Walker Historic District. The Historic District Commission approved historic area work permit, H I S T nine 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 one one four twenty twenty one. Late last year for various exterior alterations and additions to the building. In for the paving of a looped driveway and parking lot. The parking lot that was proposed to the HTC was larger than the lot proposed tonight. It had a two-way parking module that included eleven parking spaces. However, the drive out was not wide enough to meet code and would have required a waiver from the planning commission. Though the HTC approved that larger parking lot, they still encouraged the applicant to reduce the size of the lot to retain more green space. The HTC added a condition of approval for their historic area work permit that the parking lot must have substantial landscaping. So after the HTC meeting, staff also encouraged the applicant to reduce the size of the parking lot. And seek a waiver from the planning commission for the fewer than required number of spaces. And if we can go to packet page four seventy three. And that's packet page four seventy three. So the result is what you see on the right side of the screen. The lot will be approximately aligned with the existing garage, the rear of the property. The twenty six foot wide drive aisle is up to code requirements. Um, the applicant will add three standard spaces and one ADA accessible space. And there will be an ADA path to the new side entrance. The two other spaces would be in the existing garage. A one-way driveway along the right side elevation will create a loop around the building. And much of the green space in the rear of the property will be retained. Joining us tonight, we have the project architect Luis Moya of Moya Design. If you would like to add anything, Luis. You're on mute, Luis.
There he is. You're still on mute, Luis. You're still on mute. Luis, can you hear me? You're on mute.
Okay. So this is the proposal, the parking space with three regular spaces in the rear and. The handicapped space and we can use the garage for two cars. And the driveway will go through the rear around the, the house. This is the proposal approval for. History department. Do you have question for me?
Okay, um, we might. So let's just hang on for a second. Um, Chris, just to be clear, you, you know, when, when you introduced it saying. There's a parking waiver because they're coming up short on the required spaces. They don't have spaces now. So what's the status of the, the site now that there's, since there's no spaces on it?
That's a good question. Um, the previous occupant of the building and owner was a accountant. So my guess is that he had few, um, need for parking spaces, so he used street parking. For anyone that needed to come in addition to the garage and also the garage or the driveway, I believe is wide enough where if you wanted to, you could park. You know, a car there and still be able to get by. So I guess there just wasn't a need for additional parking up until now. Um, the building will be enlarged as part of the HTC approval. So now there's a need for additional onsite parking.
Okay, I've got it. So, so that, that's what's affecting the change is the, the addition and the change of you or change of tenant anyway, now, okay. Part of that was probably non-conforming since it was commercial and being used that way, but there was no parking onsite, but it. That would have predated any improvements. Okay. Very good. All right, any questions for the applicant? Anybody? No? Okay. All right. So if there are any questions, what I'm going to do for the record is move to, I'm going to ask tech team to put up the. Testimony instructions. So if anybody listening in wants to, wants to speak, so would you go ahead and do that, please?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raised hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, thanks. So let me look at the. The attendees here. Okay, I see a hand up from David Waggoner. Please bring him in and unmute yourself, David, and. Name and neighborhood or street address for the record, please.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Hello?
I am David Waggoner. My wife Sharon is with me. We are next door neighbors to this project. We are at eleven Brooks Avenue. So we do have a few questions about this.
Okay.
Our driveway adjoins their existing driveway. Currently, there is a hedge between our driveways and we would like that retained.
Okay. Go ahead and finish your, your questions or your testimony and then we'll address it once it's, once you're, once you're done.
Okay, we also are concerned about the condition of the existing fence. Between the garage, going back to the chain link fence at the back of the property. Which I think was put up there by Verizon, which is behind us. It's a six-foot chain link fence behind us, but what's between our two properties. Is about a three foot and it's in very poor condition. We have children that play back there. We have a dog pen with three dogs. And we are concerned about stirring up the dogs. Things with the children. So we would like a large fence between the two properties put up. And we also want to make sure that during the repaving process. That we still have full access in and out of our own driveway.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay, let me ask you two quick questions for clarification. So don't hang up yet or don't, don't just. Disconnect. When you talk about the adjoining hedge. Driveway and fence, are those on your property entirely?
The hedge is on. The, on nine Brooks Avenue property. Covers about half of the length of the driveway. The fence, I believe, is on the property line.
Okay. And what about the adjoining driveways? The driveway, your driveway is fully on your property, right? You're not on a shared.
Yes, the, the. Hedge goes about halfway between the garage and the street. Then for another ten feet or so, there is a little cement bump. But the very mouth of it is actually shared by both driveways.
Okay. All right, I see where this is going. All right. So let's, was there anything else in the, in your, in your questions or your, or your testimony?
I believe that's it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get staff to address this. So Chris. I'm assuming that at some point. The applicant is going to have to shoot some lines to be sure they've got everything within the property line and knowing where this is. I'm not sure if it's platted or not. Do you, do you know?
Has been platted. Looking at the site plan, it appears that that bush. I don't know what the applicant's exact plans are, and I don't know if Mr. Moya can weigh in, but it's like.
I think we can understand the system bashing the left side. Can you show me the picture or the, the site plan, please? Is approached three feet there between the, the. Driving the left and the right, the driving the neighborhood and the driveway, the property. We can extend the bush. In the front.
I think if you look exhibit, at exhibit four, five, seven, page four, five, seven. It's, it's A O O three. They've got the existing landscape plan and the proposed landscape plan. And then I think Mr. Moya could. Talk about whether he could bring it further towards the street or whatever. The left-hand side is existing, right? And you see the edge on the left-hand side and then.
Yes, I, I, I know the, the drivers is maybe together. So we can extend the bush in the, the left side of the property.
So you're actually proposing Mr. Moya to extend the existing hedge, not just retain it, but. Your plan is right now is showing a retention of that hedge or replacement at least. But you're, you're actually proposing you could bring it closer to the street. That you could add to it.
Is that right?
We do not necessarily need it to be extended. It's fine where it's at, but we just want it to be retained.
No, I understand that, but I, I think what I'm trying to get to, and Matt, you were, you were doing a good job of this. Going to the applicant's team, is this proposed landscape hedge new or existing to remain? Like, are you removing the old one or replacing it, or is this just the existing hedge? Chris, did we lose, lose somebody?
I think he's still there, Luis. The, the hedge, the bush, it's going to stay, correct? Yeah, I'm looking at the landscape plan, I believe. Let's see. I believe it's a cherry. Cherry Laurel, and it says it's going to be retained. So according to the landscape plan, it will be retained.
To, to remain, yeah.
Okay. And I didn't have a plan in front of me when, when. The discussion about the fence was coming up. Chris, could you clarify what? Where fences are and what their conditions are?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I'm not familiar with this fence in the rear of the property lines. I'll have to look into exactly who owns it in on whose property it is. I don't know if we can pull up the aerial again and see, get a, get a view of the, the fence. The aerial photo from the Verizon property straight onto the back.
Well, let me, let me suggest this. Since the new work for the driveway. Is so close to the property line and, and you know, what we're seeing for the exhibit shows. At least a reasonable buffer, but we don't know what the existing conditions are in the field. If there's. You know, if it's, if the existing paving is slightly off from what's shown, we don't know, right? Somebody will know when they get out there and, and actually. Takes them, takes the dimensions and start to do the work. But I think the whole point of this is. We're trying to make sure that whatever new work happens does not impact the neighbor either. You know, by right, if the property line happens to be misrepresented on the site plan or in practical terms. So I think the, the bottom line is that we get. The applicant and the neighbor to work with staff to be sure these issues are worked out before, you know. Paving machines show up, grading starts, whatever, whatever work is happening on the site, that the actual lines are shot and everybody understands exactly what the extent of the work is. And that it doesn't impact the neighbor.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll check in on the future plans for the fence and whose property line it is. As for the driveways, there's currently a curb. If we can zoom out just a little bit. Yeah, you can kind of see at the top of the property, there's a curb that separates the two property lines. Now, I don't know if that curb is exactly. On the property lines, but that's sort of something we'll look into to make sure that that's retained and any work doesn't go over. The neighbor's property at eleven Brooks.
Right. Okay, excellent. And then again, during, during the, the actual work itself that, that access is maintained. And, and you, maybe Chris, you could work with neighborhood services to talk about what the, the actual fence condition is on the ground. You know, we get a sense from this. Aerial, but maybe they could walk it with everybody involved and try to make some preliminary. Distinctions about who owns what and what the conditions are and all that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Perfect. All right, is there anyone else? Let me, let me go back to the list here or go back to the. Attendees and see if there's any more hands up. I don't see more hands. So Chris, let's go to your recommendation. If somebody else raises their hand, I will certainly give them the opportunity to speak. But let's go ahead and move on to the staff recommendation.
Zach recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation. Grant S P nine one six six twenty twenty-two, a three-space parking waiver for nine Brooks Avenue. Finding it in conformance with sections twenty-four dash one six eight, twenty-four dash one seven two A. And twenty-four dash two, 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 A of the city code with two conditions. The first, the ten-foot P U E and P I E must be added to the site plan before the plans can be stamped and signed by staff. And the second, staff must approve a photometric plan for the parking lot prior to issuance of a site development permit.
Thanks very much. All right. Commissioners, any questions on the recommendation? Or any concerns with the proposal? Chris, how best to connect the waggoners to you and to neighborhood services so we can. Off, offline, get, get staff to help make sure this is coordinated on the property line?
Certainly, I'm not certain I have their emails or phone numbers. So the best way would be to contact me at City Hall. Three zero one two four or six, three, one. It's City Hall calling the general planning number. They can certainly get ahold of me there, or they can call my direct number, two, four, oh, eight, oh, five, ten, sixty-four.
Okay, so. To the waggoners who, who had comments with it, please do that tomorrow. And then you guys can connect up onsite to make sure that some of these. Adjacencies are, are done, done appropriately. All right, if there aren't any more comments, let me take more time for the attendees. And there are no more hands up. So do I have a motion from the commission, please?
Chairman, planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant. S P nine one six six dash twenty twenty-two. A three-space parking waiver for nine Brooks Avenue, finding it in conformance with section twenty-four dash one sixty-eight. Twenty-four dash one seventy-two A and twenty-four dash two, 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 A of the city code with the two conditions as written to the record.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Good luck, Mr. Moya.
Thank you very much.
A good project. And again, to, to the waggoners who had some comments tonight, please do contact Chris Berger tomorrow at City Hall and, and.
Okay.
I'll help you coordinate and, and make sure that, that the onsite conditions are, are, are fair and. Is to, to the, have the least amount of impact to, to you next door. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much.
That takes us to, from the commission, Lloyd, may I start with you tonight?
Nothing dead.
Okay, Danny, anything tonight?
Happy to be standing up.
All right, we're happy you're standing up. Phil, anything tonight?
Nope, nothing for me.
All right, Matt?
Nope, nothing for me.
No, no news from you or anything, huh?
Actually, quite a bit of news, but, but no.
Okay. And then I guess we'll go to from staff. Greg, we got some meetings coming up.
Yeah, our next meeting is March sixteenth, and this is a reminder, as of right now, that meeting is anticipated to be in person. And I did check, it has been two years since our last in-person meeting. It was the second meeting of March two years ago. Since the last time the commission has met in person. So it is nice to finally get back and see everyone in person.
Wow, two years. It's flown by.
It has.
Whoopie.
All right, thanks.
Suit jacket and underwear.
I will follow up with the commissioner with an email on what to expect with, with the meetings in person. And if there's any requirements for that meeting for the commissioner.
Yeah, and I assume the public notice is also explaining the hybrid nature of the meetings, or people are still going to be welcome to testify remotely?
It, it does. We have revised all of our public notices to note that it is hybrid. So that someone can obviously come in person and provide testimony as well as go into the Zoom app and, and provide testimony that way.
Great, okay. Mr. Something, how are things tonight?
Things are well. Good evening, planning commission. And I actually have a, several exciting things to report tonight. One of which, the first one you may have already heard, but on Monday evening, we were informed that W R S, the South Carolina developer. That purchased the core of Lake Forest Mall about two and a half years ago. Closed on all four anchors on Monday. So W R S now owns the entirety of the hundred and two acres. And therefore it is teed up for a comprehensive holistic redevelopment. They have committed, I spoke to Kevin Rogers Tuesday morning, and they have committed to working with us to file a sketch plan. That is in conformance with our Lake Forest Mall master plan amendment that was approved by the Marin Council last August. So we are optimistic and excited to work with one owner and push for.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Tony froze.
I'll come back. Have I come back yet? Okay, okay. Yeah, it goes, it goes and comes. So secondly, I'm happy to report that we put in for funding. For a comprehensive zoning ordinance rewrite in the F Y twenty-three budget. And the city manager has approved that funding. It, it still needs to be approved by the Marin Council and that goes before the Marin Council. The budget goes before the Marin Council in early August. I'm sorry, early May. There will be public hearings before that, but we are optimistic that we will be able to do that. So we are already teeing up the R F P. We're getting ready to issue that as soon as the budget is approved. So we're excited about that. And then.
John, let me ask you about that. So when that, it's sort of the wheels are turning to do the zoning ordinance, does that mean a lot of the master plan? Updates will then get pushed off till after that? Or will it be some of that going on concurrently?
We haven't mapped it out yet, but we are definitely anticipating that the master plan will move forward as quickly as, as it is contemplated. So that therefore it will be concurrent. We're hiring a consultant to do the rewrite, so that will, that will help us immensely. Okay, so thirdly, this is very preliminary, but it's exciting news and I can't tell you too much about it. But we have been having very exciting preliminary meetings with a, a prospective developer for the urban core at Parklands. You know, that's been a long time coming, but this particular developer is anxious to get going very quickly. So it may come before you sooner than you would think. And so we're excited about that as well. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
That'll be nice. And that was, that was a concern during the public hearing, which I couldn't attend, but the public hearing for the adjacent property.
Exactly.
It'd be good to have that result. I thought you were going to say you had news about opening day, but you know, I guess.
Come on, I was in such a good mood, John.
Okay.
That's great news. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that, that's a lot. That's a lot of moving, moving wheels now that are, that are pretty exciting all at once.
Absolutely.
When it rains, it pours, right? All right. Frank, you're, you're hanging on with us there. Anything you wanted to add tonight?
No, nothing, nothing else special to add. I don't think it's been mentioned, but this may end up being the, if, if it's been implied maybe, but this may end up being the. The last remote meeting, just to be aware of the likelihood, at least by the plan as I understand it right now, that the next meeting will be in person.
Looking forward to it. All right, all, if there is nothing else, I'm looking around the grid here real quick. I don't see anybody flailing their arms, looking to say anything more, so. That's it for today. Have a good evening. Looking forward to seeing you all in person at our next meeting. And we're adjourned.